Each dwelling unit must consist of at least 150 square feet of floor space for the first occupant thereof, and at least 100 additional square feet of floor space per additional occupant. At least one-half of the floor area of every habitable room, foyer, hall, or corridor shall have a ceiling height of at least seven feet, and the floor area of that part of any room where the ceiling height is less than seven feet shall not be considered as part of the floor area in computing the total area of the room for the purpose of determining the maximum permissible occupancy thereof. Section four, the owner of each multifamily dwelling and/or complex as herein defined must obtain and maintain a current city of Eureka Springs business license. Section five, no variances shall be allowed for section one or four of this ordinance. The Board of Zoning Adjustment, following a public hearing, may grant variances for section two or three. A variance may be granted in no case to reduce requirement to less than 50 percent. Section six, upon the effective date of this ordinance, the city shall identify all multifamily dwellings and shall notify the owners of such properties by publishing a notice in a paper of general circulation in this county as soon as practical and by mailing notice to the individual owners thereof of the requirements of this ordinance. One hundred and twenty days from the date of publication of the notice shall be the deadline for initial compliance with all sections of this ordinance other than section six. The deadline for compliance with section seven shall be January 1, 2014, or 10 days after publication of the notice, whichever shall occur last. Failure to comply or receive an approved variance to the requirements shall result in the dwelling being identified as illegal and being posted as uninhabitable. Section seven, the owner shall purchase an annual business license. The business license fee for a multifamily dwelling shall be as follows: one, base charge including first three rental units, $65; two, base fee plus $5 per unit for units four through six; three, base fee plus $5 per unit for units four through six, and $2.50 per unit for units seven and above. Failure to obtain or operating a multifamily dwelling without a valid business license on and after January 1, 2014 will result in fines of up to $100 per dwelling unit per week of such operation. Section eight, failure to comply with sections one through four of this ordinance is an unclassified misdemeanor punishable by a fine of not less than $50 and not more than $250 per violation. Each day of noncompliance shall constitute a separate offense. Failure to comply with multiple sections shall constitute separate offenses for each section. Section nine, the definitions of the current building code and zoning ordinance of the city of Eureka Springs shall apply to this ordinance. In addition, the following definitions shall apply and shall be added to the zoning ordinance: Dwelling unit, one or more rooms in a residential building or residential portion of a building which are arranged, designed, used, or intended for use as a complete independent living facility which includes permanent provisions for living, sleeping, eating, cooking, and sanitation. Two, multifamily dwelling, a residential building or building complex containing three or more separate rental dwelling units located on a parcel of land. A multifamily dwelling also refers to an apartment, house, and/or complex. Section ten, severability clause. In the event that any section, subsection, paragraph, subdivision, clause, phrase, or other provision or portion of this ordinance shall be adjudged invalid or unconstitutional, the same shall not affect the validity of this ordinance, code, section, or chapter as a whole, or any part of provision other than the parts so decided to be invalid or unconstitutional, and the remaining provisions of this ordinance, code, section, or chapter shall remain in effect. Section eleven, repeal clause, all ordinances, resolutions, and parts thereof in conflict herewith are hereby repealed to the extent of such conflict.
Mr. Weaver.
When you look at the documents before you, I hope that the underlining and the italicizing of certain paragraphs or certain phrases came through. If it didn't, please, I will get you one. But there are certain parts of this that I think that was drafted with the intent of the document that I was given to work with, and that I think are problematic with our current code or problematic with federal or state law, and I think those should be left out. Those are the portions which are underlined, and there is a certain part that I drafted in order to make up what I believe is a deficiency in what I was given, and that is italicize, that is the punishment portion for violation of the first four sections. And the underlining in particular would come in, one portion of it is the punishment phase of $100 per unit. That is in direct violation or contradiction, I should say, not violation, contradiction of our code as to what can be done if you don't acquire your proper business license. And that should be consistent from one business to another, so if you're going to treat multifamily as businesses, you should have the same punishment as if a restaurant fails to get its license or an attorney fails to get his license, or a barbershop, or whatever. So the punishment should be consistent across the board. One of the other areas is posting of it as uninhabitable. Until you get a court order, that could become very problematic taking under the United States Constitution. So I would not be sealing up buildings without a court order, and this would allow the sealing of a building without a court order.
Mr. Mitchell.
If we go ahead and do this on the first reading, by the attorney, we can catch these changes on the second one by having you adapt it, correct?
You could, if you like the way it is scored there, I would suggest that you approve it on its first reading with the proviso that those portions now underlined would either be removed and that the italicized would be put as the official language, or if you don't agree with part of it, but other parts, that you would choose which part you want to choose.
Mr. Mitchell. So do I need to modify my motion to have the first reading then to include what you said?
The first reading is fine. I think it's for your approval. You would make it as part of your motion for approval if you so choose to make a motion tonight.
Mr. Perkypile.
Just, yeah, just real quick. Section three, this idea of ceiling height is less than seven feet shall not be considered as part of the floor area in computing the total area of the room. It seems like there are a lot of attic apartments and stuff like that that might have a lot of their floor area knocked out, you know, if we do that. I mean, I know several people that have, you know, I can barely stand up at five feet, six feet, but, you know, the ends of their building, their room, are at five feet when they have a peaked A-frame. Some sort. I just wondered where that wording came from. Is that, is this borrowed from, is this wording borrowed from other ordinances from other cities? Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay. Mr. Leswick.
Yes.
Is this ordinance borrowed from other cities?
Yes.
And...
In Arkansas.
In Arkansas.
Yes. And you have to recognize, too, that the minimum standard is that you can reduce, you have the opportunity of reducing the number of feet required to get the license to.
I saw that, by 50 percent, no more than 50 percent.
No more than 50 percent, and you're looking at a minimum space of 150 square feet is not that large a unit to begin with.
And if I could, it seems like we're pushing this really quickly, you know. I think that date is going to be missed, you know.
It's, I think the ultimate date is the date of approval of the ordinance.
Okay. And that wording right there, Mr. Weaver, you basically said we don't need to do that, we need to use section eight, correct?
That would be my suggestion, and the other place where it's got the January, or the December 31 date, it says "or" within 10 days of the, and so it anticipates that you may not very well get it done.
The effectiveness of the ordinance?
Yeah, you may not get it done until January, February, or even March.
Well, and one final thing, is there any way to clean up section six? I mean, it looks kind of cumbersome, other than this uninhabitable, you know, posted as uninhabitable, which I agree is, I mean, can't we just, you know, notify them?
Well, I've suggested that you need to take out the language that you are going to personally notify them, because if you put that in there, you are in fact creating a problem if the city fails to identify a particular dwelling and fails to send them a notice by just simply making a notification in the newspaper. Because if you put the burden upon them to come to the city, you are in a better position than if you put the burden upon the city to find every multifamily dwelling unit and send them a letter. Because if we haven't sent them a letter, we very well may miss one or two, and then they're going to claim, "Well, since you didn't send us a letter, we don't have to comply."
Almost a guarantee. I think what Mr. Weaver is saying is that if you move to strike the underlined portions of section seven and delete the bottom paragraph in section seven, that you've gotten yourself in pretty good shape as far as the ordinance is concerned.
So make it just a newspaper publication notice rather than making it a requirement that the city send all these letters.
Mr. McLung.
It reads okay.
Is it going to be a permitted business in R1, R2?
No, it's still a conditional use in R1. It is an allowable business in R2, R3.
So it's already, so the zoning part of it's already covered as a business?
The availability of multifamily dwellings is addressed in the zoning ordinance by zone.
As a business?
I don't understand what the question is.
Well, the question is that they are allowed, but it's never been where they've had to be permitted before, or operated with a license.
I don't think we...
As a business license, so does that, is it a permitted business?
Well...
I don't think they are.
Well, then B&Bs aren't a permitted business either.
They have a CUP.
So are apartments in R1. I don't understand your argument.
Well, they're not a business. They haven't been a business in the past. You're trying to create them as a business and make them have a license now.
We're identifying a business as a business.
Is it a permitted business?
If they get a permit.
In other words, okay, in other words, if they are operating as a multifamily dwelling unit in an R1 area now, since they didn't have to have a CUP to do that in the first place, they are sort of, God, I hate this term, grandfathered in and don't have to have a CUP, they just have to get a license? Is that what this ordinance says?
No, the ordinance doesn't address that at all, Joyce.
Oh.
The, I have found no records of any of the apartments that exist in R1 as having received a conditional use permit.
Okay, but they're operating as apartment buildings?
They have been for many years.
Okay, so is it okay?
It's interesting to note that in 19, I believe, 1985, when they did, redid the ordinance, the zoning ordinance, that they identified a list of B&Bs that were in existence prior to the effective date of the ordinance, and those were legally nonconforming or, and I hate the expression more than you do, grandfathered.
Yeah.
Okay, but there's no, was no corresponding list of legally nonconforming apartment houses.
Uh-huh. Is that a problem? Do we need that list to make them legally nonconforming before we pass this?
I don't think you're changing the right whether to exist or not within the different, now, if Mr. McLung has a concern here, I understand what, I think I understand what he's saying, and I can go back and look at it, but I don't think that it is necessary that you make a change at this time to your zoning, but I will look. Certainly going forward, if you disapprove this ordinance tonight, there will be no reason to at this point, but if you're going to continue on with this particular proposed ordinance, I'll go and look and see if there is, but that is, I don't think a problem from first blush of thinking about it, because although it's a business, it's not changing whether or not that can be built again in that zone.
I think our code has a list of businesses that are permissible.
It does.
And it's probably not one of them, because it doesn't exist as a business.
I'm not sure that it's not on some of those lists, because at least in R2.
As a business?
Well...
It's a permitted use.
Mr. Vina.
To the attorney, can I go ahead and amend this ordinance right now, prior to approval of the first reading?
That's what I would suggest you do.
Yes. I'd make an amendment to ordinance number 2198, striking the underlined sentences in section six and section seven, and incorporating the italic section eight, which you've already read, so it's already there, so I don't need to address that at all. So my amendment will be to strike the underlined portions of section six and section seven.
And I'll second that.
Let's call for a roll call, since it's an amendment.
It should, I mean, it doesn't have to, but it should.
No, I will.
Just for a second.
Ms. Snyder?
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Mr. McLung?
No.
Mr. DeVito?
Yes.
Mr. Perkypile?
Yes.
Ms. Elder?
Yes.
Five-one.
Mr. Vina.
I'd move to approve ordinance number 2198 on its first reading as amended.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are you opposed?
No.
Move for a five-minute recess.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are you opposed? Five-minute recess.
Thank you.
It's a cold play outside. Watch what he can get out there.
Dear me.
We're in the middle of discussion on number four under unfinished business, ordinance 2198.
I thought we were done with that.
I'm sorry.
We're done with number five.
Yeah, number five, 2196, my bad.
Okay.
Okay. We're still in the middle of discussion with Mr. Vina.
No, we voted.
Number five.
Right, number five.
I'd move to suspend the rules and place ordinance number 2196 on its third reading by Title Only.
Second.
Then the rules we have to roll call.
Yes.
Ms. Elder?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder?
Yes.
Mr. DeVito?
Yes.
Mr. Perkypile?
Yes.
Mr. McLung?
Yes.
Six-zero. Ordinance 2196, an ordinance rezoning 80 Mountain Street from R1 to C3.
Mr. Vina.
Order for ordinance number 2196 on its third reading.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oops, we have a roll call on that one.
Who was the second, please?
I was.
Mr. Perkypile.
Yes.
Mr. DeVito?
Yes.
Mr. Perkypile?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder?
Yes.
Mr. McLung?
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Six-zero.
Okay. Moves us to number six. That big old person's got a trash bag that draw strings.
Motion to discuss.
Second.
And I think that was dumped in my lap, and I believe we have decided to wait till this round of bags is done, then on our next purchase, we'll get the ones with the draw strings in.
Awesome. That'll be nice.
So everybody be happy.
Yes.
Okay.
Beautiful thing.
All right. Moves us on to number seven, resolution to proclamation designing, designating first Sunday in November as Bam Bam Day. Ms. Snyder and Mr. Mitchell.
Move to discuss.
Second.
Do we have a proclamation?
No, I think it was agreed on that we just do it at that meeting, at that particular meeting was...
So did you proclaim it?
Yeah, it was proclaimed then, y'all voted on it.
We voted to approve it, but I didn't hear a proclamation.
Okay, it's proclaimed, so, yeah.
Bam Bam got his day.
Now, do we...
Did we do a paper proclamation? No, we did not. Or a resolution? No, we did not. We didn't call for one then.
Okay.
What?
Ms. Snyder asked for one of two things.
Okay.
Whichever you all wanted to do, and I think proclamation was that either, that particular day, you can look back in the minutes, but it was, you wanted one of two.
Okay. I think it was called for a proclamation as opposed to a resolution.
That's not what I'm talking about. The first Sunday in November as opposed to the actual date.
Yes.
Because the first Sunday in November changes.
Okay. So proclamation, I think we voted on this all the last time, we thought we took care of it.
Do we have to proclaim a proclamation every year, or is it good for one year?
No, it's good for that day.
Okay, then. I'm confused, okay. I would like to see the first Sunday in November every year as Bam Bam Day, in honor of not only the bear, but Serpentine Creek, and all they have done for the animals and Eureka.
Okay, that's a whole different, that's a whole different ballgame than number seven.
Okay, well, we didn't have our attorney last time.
You're getting almost into the requirement of having an ordinance.
Oh, God, you're kidding.
Because you are, proclamations are typically issued by the mayor's office, by the executive branch. A resolution to declare a particular day is a temporary matter, but if you are now wanting to do it in perpetuity, that some particular day is Bam Bam Day forever and ever, you're getting into the realm of an ordinance, because ordinances are of a permanent nature rather than a resolution which is of a temporary nature.
So what do we do if we just want to be able to say, first Sunday in November, we recognize Serpentine Creek and Bam Bam?
Well, if you do it by...
Without doing an ordinance.
If you do it by a resolution or a vote like you took at the last meeting, that would be of a temporary nature, and I would suggest that then next year's council, when it comes late October, would want to take a similar vote, or whenever they feel appropriate, and the council after that, and the council after that, so that it is not a permanent, but if you want to make it a permanent, and put it down so that it's forever Bam Bam Day, you need an ordinance.
It's getting a lot more complicated than it needs to be for the bear.
Yeah, because I didn't want an ordinance, I just wanted it recognized annually.
So we proclaimed it last time, and that should suffice.
I think at this point, it's been left that the particular day was Bam Bam Day for this time, and if next year you want another Bam Bam Day, I would suggest council...
Put it back on the agenda.
Okay, I'm putting it on my October calendar to remind everyone to proclaim it.
Okay. Moving on to new business. We have dealt with one and two, that moves us to number three, vacating 100 foot of Palo Pinto.
Move to discuss.
Second.
Floor's open.
Didn't we do that already?
No.
No, we reclaim jurisdiction.
Yes, now we need to vacate it.
Okay.
Do we have an ordinance somewhere, too?
We do.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I think Mr. Weaver said that we should wait until after the 30 days, is that not correct, before we initiate the ordinance to, I think that's what you told us before.
Mr. Weaver, go ahead.
Unless you went ahead and attached an emergency clause to the previous one, yes, you should wait 30 days to actually complete this one, and I want to caution the council both on this one and on the Nut Street one, that I use the legal descriptions provided by, to me, as promulgated by the landowners themselves, and I am making no warranty that these are the proper descriptions. In fact, I suspect the one on Nut Street because it refers to, I believe, just the Riley or just the Armstrong survey rather than the Riley and Armstrong, and I'm pretty sure it probably refers to the Riley and Armstrong survey rather than just one or the other, because I know of no one Riley or one Armstrong survey.
Mr. Mitchell.
So, to the attorney, you recommended we wait 30 days, but if we have to do three readings anyway, and since we only meet once, and we do a first reading now, we would do probably a second one, say, December, so before we even got to a third one, 30 days is going to pass, so we still could proceed tonight.
I think you could still take your first reading, I would caution you against taking three readings in one night.
Oh, right.
Or, I would also caution you, you made one each landowner to, that is petitioning you, or each petitioning group, to verify to you this is exactly what they've got in mind, and I think maybe the Palo Pinto one already has, but the Nut Street one, I've not been told that, I believe that they came last time, or the time before, and said that the Palo Pinto one was what they, exactly they wanted.
And I think they just got a survey, too.
Yeah, I believe they got a full survey. I don't know exactly how the other legal description is created.
I'd move to assign this ordinance a number and place it on its first reading.
Second.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are you opposed? Does there a reason these have emergency clauses on them?
They were simply put on there in case the council wished to use them, they are not absolutely required, and they should not be read tonight unless there is a third reading approved.
Okay, stand by.
The ordinance number is 2199. An ordinance vacating portions of an unopened portion of Palo Pinto Avenue, where the City Council of Eureka Springs, Arkansas, has reviewed the petition of the adjoining landowners to vacate the area defined by the following legal descriptions: a part of Palo Pinto Avenue and a part of Ojo Street have shown on the plat of survey for the Freeman Edition to the city of Eureka Springs, Arkansas, more particularly described as follows to wit: Begin at the northwest corner of Lot 1, Block 1, said Freeman Edition, thence north to a point located on the north side of said Palo Pinto Avenue, thence east along the north side of said Palo Pinto Avenue to a point on the east side of said Ojo Street. Said point on Ojo Street being located by prolongation of the north line of said Palo Pinto Avenue, then south along the east side of said Ojo Street to a point that is created by prolongation of the north line of Lot 1, Block 1, said Freeman Edition, thence west along said prolongedated line and the north line of Lot 1, Block 1, said Freeman Edition, to the point of beginning. And where a section four... And whereas section 1454-1042 of the Arkansas Code annotated allows the City Council to vacate certain streets, now therefore be it ordained by the City Council of the City of Eureka Springs, Arkansas, that the sections described above are hereby vacated and title is hereby vested in fee simple to the adjoining landowners for the sum of blank per land owner.
Any further?
Question for the city attorney, should we just put zero in that blank?
If this is outside the 320 acres, I would suggest that the sum of $1 be placed in there because a transfer of land by deed requires a fee, although you do not have to collect the dollar. If it is inside the 320, your code would require the standard fee minimum. And I make no warranty as to whether this is inside the original 320 or not. I believe Nut Street may actually be, but I'm not sure about this one at all. And I may be wrong, it may be the other way around, but I heard some, in one of, in looking at some of the notes from Parks, one or the other of them, I believe, is inside the 320, if not both, or I-
Probably be Nut Street, yeah.
Mr. McClung. Mr. McClung.
Riley and Armstrong survey is inside the 320.
Is typically the 320.
Freeman addition is not.
So.
So what does that mean?
It would be a dollar on the Freeman.
It would be a dollar, would be an appropriate amount, because even a gift or a transfer during the divorce, a deed would normally execute with a dollar. And I'll look at that again, you may actually want to say that there's no deed to be transferred, simply a vacation of the property, and we may scratch that at the next reading, assuming you don't make a second, third reading tonight.
Trust me, we're not going to.
Mr. Reed.
I'd move to approve ordinance number 2199 on its first reading.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Done deal. 2199. This is Sunday number four, discussion of vacation of Nut Street. Motion to discuss.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Floor's open, Mr. Perkypal.
Well, there seemed to be some issue here that you had with this particular ordinance.
I have some doubts that the legal description that is there was completely sufficient for a transfer of the property, and if it does prove deficient, it would fall back on the drawer of the description, and I understand that came from the landowner, but you may want to ask the landowner for confirmation of how they arrived at their description, because if it doesn't close in Arkansas, it didn't sell, or it didn't transfer.
Okay, then I'd like to make a motion to table this until we can get further clarification.
Again.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It is postponed.
And tells them they have to do clarification.
Do what?
Well, that's the landowner, so they have to do clarification.
I guess we'll have to, city.
The application, I think, was made originally to the clerk's office, and I don't really want to put a burden on the clerk's office, but if they receive the original application, they should, if the Parks Department has sent the original one, then you should direct the Parks Department most likely to be the one that would make a notification.
To whomever did.
To whomever the original application was received, because they should have the direct contact to that.
All right, we have postponed five, six, and seven, moves us to number eight, scheduled workshop reference downtown parking facility, motion to discuss.
So moved.
Second.
Floor's open.
I would just take this off our agenda for right now, and start the year fresh next year and place it back on, because it's just not in timely manner that we're really going to get around to this until next year.
Okay.
Is that a motion?
C.
Yes.
We need a motion to take off the agenda. May I, Ms. Snyder?
Rather than doing whatever, can we just say, can we postpone it till January, can we specify so we don't accidentally overlook and forget?
Oh, trust me, we ain't forgetting this one.
Okay, the original motion, the second, is to remove from the agenda, no further discussion, no other motions, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, Ms. on the agenda. Moves us to number nine, discussion of planning commission's procedure for vacating property. Motion to discuss.
So moved.
Is there a second? Mr. Reed. Okay. Floor's open, yes, sir.
We just received this tonight? Or has this been in our?
I've had-
We received this a couple of months ago.
Had it on in.
Oh, that's what she handed us. Yes.
I just hand it here.
Yes, sir.
Well, in lieu of the fact that our planning chair is not here to really kind of step us through this again, if no one has any objection, I'd like to table this until the next meeting, when she can be here, we can kind of step through this one more time.
There it is.
I'll second that, and I'll read through it again and be prepared.
Any other discussion on it? All right, motion is to postpone until next meeting. We have a second. No further discussion. Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Don't we just need to read this? I mean, she's had this on here, they don't need to do anymore, this is now kind of up to us, or is this just to inform us?
This is an informal document here.
Right, and, okay, so we're supposed to be discussing the procedures that they have come up with.
Are you prepared to discuss, I guess?
No, that's, okay, and see, and that's what I'm asking, too. So do we want to just put this off to the next meeting and all of us read up on this and be ready?
It is the motion.
I think that's the motion on the table, right now.
Okay, but haven't we already done that?
Let's do it again, we're not prepared.
So no further discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Postponed. Moves to number 10, resolution for art wall agreement. Motion to discuss.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Floor's open.
Mr. Mayor, if you want to lead us in that.
Diane can probably tell you more than I can, because she feels with it directly.
Ms. Walker, could you fill us in?
Just a little bust.
This is just a continuance for the Arts Council to use the art wall, you know, we just need the council's approval to still continue to manage it. We will, we're working on creating a theme for this coming year, for the next two years to display.
So, all we need to do is provide a number for this.
We have to get a resolution.
Yeah.
We don't have a resolution yet?
There we do, yeah.
Yeah, we have a resolution, it's right here.
Yes, not this one. Sorry, I don't have, I don't have it.
Here you go.
Okay, thank you.
I didn't, I didn't print it, apparently.
I'd like to move to provide a number for this resolution and read it.
Read it for approval, or?
Read it for approval.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Stand by for the number.
And I don't have a copy of it. I can't locate it. Resolution number?
The resolution number will be 630.
630, yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Resolution 630, a resolution in support of the continued use of certain city property for the public display of art, whereas the City Council of the City of Eureka Springs, Arkansas, in an effort to promote business for the city, and whereas the mission of the Eureka Springs Arts Council, which is under the mayor, is to advocate for the arts, excuse me, and to encourage, empower, and coordinate a sustainable arts economy through the diverse creative community of artists and arts organizations in Eureka Springs. Now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Eureka Springs, Arkansas. Section 1, the Eureka Springs Arts Council is approved to continue to use certain city-owned property for the display of arts as follows. The Eureka Springs Art Wall displays, displays located in the First Street parking lot and the off-the-wall displays located on 23 North, North Main entrance to town. Section 2, that said period of use shall be no less than two years from the date of the approval of this resolution, with renewable, with renewal possible by future resolution. Section 3, that the Eureka Springs Arts Council is hereby authorized to continue use of, modify, and/or develop guidelines, rules, and regulations with regard to said display as necessary.
Thank you. Moves us on to number 11, discussion of forming auditorium commission.
Motion to discuss.
Second.
Floor's open. We should meet him.
A little history behind this, the last council formed an auditorium committee in order to study how to proceed with the auditorium. The unanimous opinion of that committee was to form an auditorium commission. Unfortunately, the last city council would not go forward with the unanimous opinion of the committee that they allowed to be formed. And since there has been a change, and we no longer have an auditorium manager, there has been a temporary auditorium committee formed by the CAPC Commission Chair to oversee the auditorium in this transition period, and we feel that we need to go ahead and form the auditorium commission, there is a comprehensive state ordinance regulating that, the city attorney had already drawn up an ordinance for the auditorium, so I'm hoping council will agree to go ahead and have him resurrect that ordinance on formation of an auditorium commission. So I will move to ask the city attorney to write an ordinance on the formation of an auditorium commission.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion?
Yeah. The auditorium commission, if we're going to do this, it should be, it should very specifically state what the responsibilities and duties are, because if this is a city council commission, and the CAPC is in charge of running the auditorium, there's going to be a conflict there. I'm thinking that perhaps the things required of this auditorium commission, there should be some input, some kind of thing from the CAPC, and the last time we had an auditorium commission, the mistake we made was not funding it, so they had no money to do anything, and besides which, we didn't really have people who knew anything about theater who were on it, and so it didn't go very well, so, I don't know, are we premature in writing an ordinance? Does this need to be discussed with some sort of a committee to decide what the duties of this should be? In other words, who's going to be in charge of booking, who's going to be in charge of promotion and advertising, all these things the commission is going to have to oversee, and that's a lot of responsibility unless we get it all down on paper. I don't, I don't, I just wonder whether we're being premature here, that's just my thought.
Mr. Mitchell.
I respect everything Joyce said, and I don't disagree, I think all, those are all valid, wonderful questions. I think all we were calling for tonight was to ask the attorney to bring forth an old ordinance so that we can start that discussion, because we obviously aren't going to have it tonight, because none of us really know exactly what the ordinance had in it or where we're going, but all of the questions that Alderman Zeller brought up are excellent questions, and I'm sure will be answered as we go through this process.
Mr. Perkypal, I think you had your hand up.
Yes, Alderman DeVito had mentioned that there is a temporary committee right now that's been established by the CAPC. Correct. As informed by the CAPC.
Director.
By the chair.
The chair.
The chair. The chair of the CAPC. So should this be like a, should this be, remain a committee, or should it be its separate commission? Should it, because the CAPC right now is, as a taxing authority, they are funding, you know, virtually most of the operation of the auditorium at this point in time, so should it be set, this is a question, I'm not saying this shouldn't happen, but should it be a separate commission, or should it be a sub, you know, somehow attached to the CAPC if they're going to do that, and continue on with their, their contract with the city?
Mr. DeVito, you next.
The reason the CAPC and virtually everybody involved wants to go with the commission is because there is established guidelines governing the commission, and it's very succinct, and it's in Arkansas law on how to run an auditorium commission, and there's, right now, there's nothing on a committee. I mean, there's no, no rules, there's no guidelines, there's no regulations, there's nothing. The committee that was formed to study this, their unanimous recommendation was to form a commission, and I just think, because, I mean, the state statutes are so concise, they even require bonding for the commission members, because money is being handled, so a committee has no rules, no regulations, no guidance, no guidelines, nothing, a commission has a very comprehensive set of guidelines, rules, and regulations by which to operate the auditorium.
Mr. Perkypal.
And, and agreed, and the CAPC is a commission that has those same rules and guidelines, and why could it not continue with the CAPC? What I'm getting at is that if the CAPC is paying for, they don't pay all of the costs, but they're virtually paying for most of the cost, why don't they take more ownership of that particular building? Or the facility, or the operation, operational aspect?
That's-
Mr. McClung, I think you had your hand up in amongst-
Yes, the CAPC doesn't, wasn't additional responsibility, and that's, it's, it's, we do it because somebody has to.
Nobody else will do it.
Yeah, that's right, I mean, it really, the CAPC would like to pass it towards back to the city, I don't believe I'm speaking out of turn here. So, you know, this is, would be the first step in doing that. And it's got to be funded, not saying that the CAPC wouldn't continue to help in that respect for a period of time, but, you know, the CAPC wants to apply every dollar it can towards advertising and promotion of the city. In, in, in a way that's outside of the city. So, to, you know, to draw more people in, and that's what we feel our true mission is at the CAPC. I got, I don't know, I won't even go there. That's all.
Okay, Mr. Weaver, hand you.
If it leaves any of your concerns, and it may not, Alderman Zeller and some of the others, I think if I understand the motion correctly, you're just wanting to see the old ordinance, you're not necessarily wanting to vote on it in the next deal, and it's not going to cost the city anything to do that, because I'm pretty sure I saw a copy of it in my files today, when I was working on some of these other matters, so it should be just a matter of printing you off a copy, get you a copy to give you a first step to look at, and then if there are other issues such as Cubatrest, or Mr. Perkypal, or Alderman Perkypal is also looking at, or anyone else, it gives you step one to moving towards something happening, rather than just miry ground to begin with. And I certainly wouldn't encourage you to pass the thing on three readings now, not at all.
at all.
Mr. Mitchell.
Okay, as things stand right now with no manager and with a volunteer committee, who schedules entertainment and goes after an entertainer? Guys?
CAPC. Now, I can't say that we are, that we are out soliciting acts to perform.
Okay.
I'm not sure, I'm not sure that our, that our auditorium, whatever, what was he called?
Director.
The director was, was, you know, actively pursuing.
Okay, so who, I guess maybe it should be, who is supposed to be actively soliciting entertainers to perform in the auditorium?
I don't believe we had anybody solicit entertainers. We put ourselves out there for promoters who represent entertainers.
But how do they know that we have this available for their entertainer?
I think they're advertising period.
That's part of what, that's part of what the mission for two thousand and fourteen is going to be, is to put out information to, there are places where you go to solicit promoters and such.
Well, that's, I mean, do we have to hire somebody to do that?
No, that's something that Mike was going to do next year.
Okay, so in other words, if we have a volunteer committee, they're not in charge of soliciting entertainers?
No.
If we have a council commission, are they responsible for soliciting entertainers?
Could be, could be.
A council commission?
Well...
Well, it's an auditorium commission.
Auditorium commission. But the council...
We're getting a little too far afoot. We have, we just have the request that we get this document to us for our next meeting.
Well, I just want to know who it would be, in which entity that it would be, that we would have somebody actively soliciting entertainment to have this used as much as possible. I don't know if it would be committee, commission, CAPC, council, what?
Well, right now for fourteen, it will be the CAPC. Beyond that, I can't speak to that.
Well, it's...
Yes, ma'am.
When you say commission, you're talking about a commission like the Parks Commission, like the CAPC Commission. This is a, this has an enabling ordinance that it was within the guidelines of the state, just the same as we formed the CAPC. They have, you set up commissioners for staggered terms. They hire a director. They have to be funded because they have to hire a director, and the director does exactly what the director who used to be there does. You're just back to running it the way it was, except that you have more people involved, and now you have levy to sales tax to fund it. And that's really what we're looking at here. So, okay, I mean, we can go ahead and discuss it, but that's the way it's going to have to end up because it can't exist without funding. And the only way we have to fund these things is with another sales tax and another referendum, the same as we fund the CAPC in the Park District.
Mr. Mitchell.
Let's just bring the ordinance forward, and at some point, I got to tell you, I have got to get caught up on this because I, I really want to understand more in depth the role of the CAPC, how the CAPC is funded, what there really is going on with the money before, because I have a strange feeling I see a dump coming on, back onto the city for the auditorium and running it and funding it, and are we going to have that in the 2014 budget, are we not? There's just a lot of questions here. But the first step, obviously, is just to get the ordinance back, and we'll go from there.
Mr. McLean.
I'm just curious, did you call the auditorium a dump, or?
No, a dump from the CAPC.
Beautiful lowland.
Okay, moving on.
We just haven't voted yet.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right.
What do we vote?
I was in there the other night, it's not a...
For you to, for you to bring the copy.
You have to read before you know what you voted on.
Here we go, we're not done yet. Moves this on to agenda setting, Mr. DeVito.
Nothing.
Mr. McLean.
Zero.
Mr. Mitchell.
Nothing.
Mr. Perkypal.
None.
Ms. Snyder.
Is December ninth our only December meeting?
Yes.
Okay, nothing.
Ms. Zeller.
Oh, is that, is that, we're having one meeting in December?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, no, I don't have anything to add. I'm kind of glad we avoided the flag thing, but...
Council comments, Mr. DeVito.
No comment.
Well, somebody, it was an element in the room, he's been sitting over there.
I'm ready to go home.
Mr. Mitchell.
Yes, briefly, the noise committee had, has met one time and will be meeting again December the fourth. We went through a period, very briefly at the beginning of the meeting, and a lot of times when you're forming a new committee or you're going into a process with a lot of people, you go through a couple of phases, and they're called storming and norming. And honestly, the diversity of this group that met, the storming lasted probably fifteen or twenty minutes. It, and then it moved on to some of the most thoughtful and, and open communication that I have witnessed since I've been in this town for five years. Al Frost, the sheriff from the police department, Fatima, and Mike Bishop and all the others were, were excellent. Al gave us some information about loud mufflers and some of the state statutes that nobody knew about or had any indication at all. We're in the middle of working on a draft at this point in time, and our approach is a trifecta or a three-point. We're looking at ordinance and enforcement, and the most important one of all is communication issues and how to communicate in a positive manner of the issue of noise and, and how it applies to this town and not be offensive to any segment of the population. And let me repeat again, this is not a motorcycle noise ordinance. Motorcycle is, is out of the picture. It's, this is a noise ordinance in general. So everybody out there that's worried about that this is still some kind of ploy to attack a particular segment, it is absolutely not true. That's it.
Mr. Perkypal.
Yes, I'd like to thank Pat Luhon and the folks at Parks for putting up the Christmas decorations. Thank you, Pat, did a great job.
Thanks very much.
I think he virtually did it mostly all himself. And also, I'd like to thank Pat for taking over for, for all the parks and maintaining them. He's done a great job.
Ms. Snyder.
Nope.
Ms. Zeller?
No.
All right. Use it to me then. First, I'd like to give thanks to God because he gave me you guys, he gave me you council. This has been a blessing this year that, and I sincerely mean this, that I think this is the way it's supposed to happen, that you guys came aboard, you're doing what you're supposed to do, you're taking care of business, no BS, no agendas, you come to work on what needs working on. So I'm thankful to him for you guys. I'm also thankful to him for my family, just a lot of stuff. I'm dealing with some issues right now that I can't really talk about, but I think we're going to get through it okay. Need to read this press release. Eureka Springs Transit System City, the Eureka Springs, City of Eureka Springs will be providing transportation to and from this year's Christmas parade on December the sixth, two thousand thirteen. The special service will run from four P.M. to just before six P.M. and for about an hour after the parade. Fair will be one non-perishable food item each way per person, or two food items for a round trip per person. Two dollars per boarding per person without a food item. All food items will be split between the Flint Street Food Bank and the Wildflowers Food Bank. Pickup points will be the Plainor Hill Parking Lot, Parking Ride, the Transit and Welcome Center, the Old High School, Village at Pine Mountain Parking Lot, and trolley stops between those lots, all at the Downtown Depot. I'm having to add some numbers here because I kind of got cut off on the side. Move on to a list of events, November the twenty-eighth, twenty-ninth, city offices are closed for Thanksgiving on Thursday and Friday. November the twenty-eighth, Dong Gemi Turkey Trot at Lake Leatherwood at eight thirty A.M. November the twenty-ninth, Santa in the Park. November the twenty-ninth, December the first, talent on parade in the auditorium. November the thirtieth through December the first, Fall Art Show in the Ozarks. November the twenty-ninth through the twenty-first, Experience the Light Drive-Thru Light Display with Limb and the Chivvy at the Great Passion Play. December the fifth, Silver Tea Forty-seventh Annual at the Crescent Hotel. December the sixth, Christmas Parade Grand Marshals, the Platters, which would be very cool. December the seventh, Santa in the Park from one to five P.M. December the seventh, Christmas Tour of Homes. December the seventh, John Two Hawks Concert in the Auditorium. Now till December the twenty-second, Christmas Snow Village and Train Display at Carnegie Library. That's all I have.
I would like to say happy Thanksgiving, everyone.
Yes. Motion to this, this...
Say.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We're out of here.